Good evening. If I could get you to stand for the pledge, please. If everyone could take a minute to make sure their cellphones are silenced so we won't be interrupted, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start off with item two, the year-end audit. Ms. Nicole Ruff, CPA, Drescher and Malecki.
Hi, my name is Nicole Ruff and I am with Drescher and Malecki. We are your external auditors, so we audit the financial-
Pull the mic, yeah, pull the mic closer.
Can you hear me now?
Cindy, we can't hear up on stage.
We're having trouble, Lucinda.
It sounds like it works, but no?
Sure it sounds good, yeah, I can't hear up here. It's not you, Nicole. No, it's, yeah, it's our, that's her mic. So while Lucinda's looking at that, I just want to assure the audience, our engineers have identified what in the new air system is causing some of the loud noises that you may hear. There's one coming out of the big vents in the front. Basically, it's pulling so much air that you can hear it. The second one is some rumblings up in the ceiling here in the vents, which needs more vaffles. And then the VFDs that are behind us, which is the reason why we can't hear each other, those are being moved down to the basement. So this auditorium will actually be closed down for three weeks between sometime in the next week or so and prior to the next board meeting, because it worked out well for the schedule in the elementary school to resolve these issues now that they've been identified. So we'll do another test on it in October, board meeting, and see how that works out. Because it won't work for the musicals or anything either, clearly, right?
Can you hear me now? Can you, can you hear me? Okay. All right, my name is Nicole Ruff, I'm from Drescher and Malecki. We are the external auditors for the district. So what that means is we take a look at your financial statements for the year ended, June 30th of 2018. And the products of our audit are on the first slide that you will have in front of you. The first is the basic financial statements. So our responsibility is to take a look at your basic financial statements and make sure that those financial statements are, we obtain reasonable assurance that there is no material misstatements in those financial statements. We were able to do that in the current year. We have an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. Are you still having problems? Do you want me to stop? Do you want me to just come up there and talk to you guys?
Lucinda, the question is, is what if she just sat here and used one of these speakers to talk to the board? Because we're not, we're getting feedback now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I can't seem to get the adjusted right-
Can she use a different mic?
Do you want me to go back there?
Yeah, can she use that mic?
It's gonna, it's gonna be the same thing.
No, it's not, I can understand you clearly.
Yeah, we can't understand her.
We, I understand everything you said.
Okay, I can give her this mic.
All right, Nicole. If you're jinxing our mics, Nicole.
Is this okay? All right, I feel like I'm at a concert. All right, I'll start over. My name is Nicole Ruff, I am from Drescher and Malecki. There are numerous auditors that you have, so you have internal auditors, claims auditors. We are the external auditors. We are responsible for auditing your financial statements. Is it? Hold it close to my mouth, okay. All right. Our responsibility is to make sure that the financial statements, we gain reasonable assurance that they are not materially misstated. And we were able to do that in the current year. So we do plan on issuing an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. They are in draft form right now, but we expect that they will be finalized in the, next week, and they will have that unmodified opinion. The second item that you'll receive is a management letter. And the management letter just has recommendations that we provide for the district. So during an audit of the financial statements, there can be different types of findings. The first is a material weakness. And that would mean that we found something that we consider to be very significant and would have a high risk that your financial statements could be materially misstated. We did not find any of those items. The second item would be a significant deficiency, and that would be something that's less severe than a material weakness, but still important to note to the board. And we did not find any of those items as well. Those items would be included within your basic financial statements. And if you had any of them, you'd have to come up with a corrective action plan to the state. So it's very good to know that there were no material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. The only items that we have are really recommendations that we have to improve and other comments that we have. So that letter has three items in it. One for procurement, suspension and demarmament, extra classroom and the school lunch fund. The third letter is an auditor communications letter. And earlier this evening, we met with the audit committee. And that letter is specifically for the audit committee, our required communications. So we went through all of our required communications that we're required to have with the audit committee. And then the audit committee makes that recommendation to the board to approve the financial statements. The last item that we have is our opinion on the extra classroom activities. So in addition to our audit of the basic financial statements, there are also a separate set of financial statement for your extra classroom activity funds. And that's a cash basis financial statement. We do plan on also issuing a unmodified clean opinion on those financial statements. In the current year, it is important to note that we had no items of, that we found that the district was out of compliance. The most important item to note is that the district is in compliance with Section 1318 of Real Property Tax Law. So that law is, is that the district must maintain a level unassigned fund balance of 4% of your subsequent year's appropriations. And the district is at 4% of that, that amount. In summary, we received the full cooperation of everyone that we worked with. We do work a lot with, with different individuals. We're requesting expenditures, we're looking at payroll, we're working with extra classroom funds. So we received the full cooperation from everyone that we worked with. It was good to see that there weren't any of those material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and that the findings that we did have were really just recommendations and not instances where we felt that your controls weren't there. So, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
So it's a little bit better. Lucinda, what it sounds like is it's bouncing off the back wall and then coming here, but it didn't sound like that when you spoke. But Nicole, I could understand you. Could the board understand her? Okay, so she's asking if you have questions.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Definitely, I think it's that area that there's feedback, okay. All right, I'm gonna move on. We are now on item three, which is any request to withdraw specific items from the consensus items. It's hard to hear me. No, so we're moving on to now item four, routine actions, approval of consensus items. Recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through R.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carried.
Okay. This is the time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Where should we go?
Try that mic, if not, we'll, try that mic, if not, we'll get the mic back for you.
How's this sound? All right. My name is Pat Proffick. And what I want to talk about today is the three minutes between class time and the middle school, high school. I have spoken with Mr. Servoni about this in the past, but I think now, more than ever, I think a four-minute pass time should be implemented. Some of the things my kids have told me is that near lunchtime in the sixth grade specials, that center intersection is jammed, and it is extremely hard to get through there. You've added, what, 100 kids to the building? And at that time, when they're moving, it's really, you know, go put 100 people in there on top of everything else and see how crowded it is. Grades nine through 12 aren't allowed to use that center staircase. And these kids need to go from the science end down to the tech end and back, and it takes longer to get through that intersection. They're not supposed to use that stairwell if they have a class. They have to go down to the end or the other end, go up and sometimes it's back. My 10th grader has a study hall upstairs. So they can't say there's not kids going up there from those grades. My eighth grade daughter has homeroom upstairs. First period, she's down, second period, she's up, third, back and forth, all the way to eighth period. What I've always told my kids is take all your stuff in the morning and put it in the smaller backpack, change before lunch, and then get your afternoon stuff. Now they have monitors telling them to get to class. I would like to know how they're supposed to go through traffic, go to their lockers, be on time, go to the bathroom. If you're a girl and you have your period, how are you supposed to fit that in? And what about the threat of detention when they're late? It's a new situation, and I think it needs to be studied. I've even heard a rumor that a teacher wants to close the door and not let the kids in because they've already started teaching. I don't think that's right. My kids are stressed about being late, and the threats don't help. The teachers may think that one minute of teaching time is crucial. And I know what the standards and everything else, it may be sometimes. But if it takes the kids two or three minutes to get unfrazled from trying to get through the congestion, they're not concentrating, and you're losing more time. My kids, and so many others, are good kids and they follow the rules. But sometimes when circumstances change, rules and schedules need to be changed. And in this case, a four-minute pass time is what I think should be done. Adding a whole grade to the building population and now seeing the congestion, now that it's real and not just a plan, I think is reason enough to take a serious look at changing it to a four-minute pass time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
So I have a question. Have you talked to Mr. Servoni?
In the past, not this year.
Not this time? So does he know that you have a concern?
I haven't gotten around to it.
Would you do that?
I would.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, Mr. Shivitz, but they'll share too, so whomever.
Good evening. My name is Tebra Howard, and I'm a taxpayer, and I've spoken in front of you before. And the reason I'm here is because on the agenda, there is item I, approve the transfers of unassigned fund balance. That balance, when you add everything up, comes to over $2.1 million. And it's all going into reserves. There's nothing going to be appropriated for next year's taxes, which you have done in the past. Last year, you appropriated 500, over $518,000 that you had to add to in order for the vote to, budget to pass. The year prior was over $400,000. I don't understand why none of the unassigned fund balance is being pushed forward for next year's taxes. We all know what happened this year, which was no fun with the budget going down and more money being taken out of reserves. So perhaps what we can do, what you can do, is instead of doing this, have more discussion, use some of their fund balance to mitigate taxes for next year. You're well able to do that, and you've done it in the past. So I urge you to really consider that and not just approve what is in here. There's no presentation, like in previous years, showing what the unassigned fund balance is and the percentages going into them and what the totals are. I looked all over, there was nothing like there have been in previous years. So the only even way you can find out what the unassigned fund balance was, was to add everything up. So I've been looking through and looked through other school districts. They've been audited by the controllers for financial conditions, like we were back in 2011. And there seems to be a current theme of school districts overestimating expenditures and putting a lot of money into reserves versus lowering the taxpayers' taxes on their property. So I urge you to, don't accept this carte blanche. Go back and discuss it and come up with an amount to apply to the 1920, you know, 2019 to 20, 2020 tax base. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Are we ready? Okay. So Lucinda, you asked, did it help because you took it down a little? Try it a little bit more. Because it just sounds like it's bouncing. And we didn't have this problem last month, or the month before. Oh, so you think that, oh, so we're not, the monitors aren't coming, is what Dawn is stating. Even though the blue lights, we're not using, these monitors aren't helping. Because it sounds like it's bouncing off the back wall. But yet the blue lights are on, which is leading us to believe they're on. Dawn's saying they're not working. They're not coming off the stage, that's, they're not. Do you want me to keep talking, or wait? Okay. So we're on to item five, new business resignations. Except resignation that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of senior clerk stenographer Lori Wasenskyak, sorry, be accepted effective September 22nd, 2018. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Wasenskyak for her 35 years of service to the district.
Second. Questions or discussions?
Just that she's going to be greatly missed. She's an institution there.
This is one of those losses that's hard to make up for. It honestly is.
Seeing no more, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Oops. All right, lost my place. B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Here are the motions. Number one, permanent appointment that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Cheryl Lynn Stevens be permanently appointed as a senior clerk typist effective October 17th, 2018.
Second. Discussion?
I'd like to point out that Cheryl Lynn works in the transportation office, and she does a superb job for the district, and we're blessed to have her.
Seeing no others, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item two, appoint elementary teacher that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Adriana Jimenez, who is initially certified in early childhood education B through two and childhood education one through six, is hereby appointed to a part-time .5 FTE position effective September 1st, 2018 and ending on June 30th, 2019. Salary is based upon ETA contract bachelor step one.
Second. Questions or discussion?
Just that this opening was caused by Amy Sullivan filling the retirement in the computer science for the elementary school, and so it opened up a .5. This is a crazy day. Why are you, why are you running, Lucinda? Were your comic relief tonight, I suspect, here?
Seeing no further comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item three, appoint teacher aide that upon the rec- oop, nope. Adriana? Where is she?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, there she is. Adriana, will you just stand up so we can see you, please? We're a little distracted here by the noises. You've been with us a couple weeks already. The kids are pretty excited to be in your room. Are you having fun? Good, excellent, thank you. I know. Oh, no, that was my fault. Item three, appoint teacher aide that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Susan Walzak be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective September 6th, 2018 and ending March 5th, 2019. Salary is per CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second. Questions or discussions?
Is Susan here? I see no, this time I asked, okay.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item four, appoint teacher aide that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Rihanna Gallego be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective September 6th, 2018 and ending March 5th, 2019. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second. Discussion or questions?
Is Rihanna here?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item five, appoint social worker that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Holly Tredo, who is provisionally certified as a school social worker, is hereby appointed to a probationary position as a social worker for a probationary period commencing on September 24th, 2018 and ending September 23rd, 2022. Salary is based upon ETA contract bachelor step one.
Second. Questions or discussions?
So this is a new position for us this year, which it allows us to have a social worker in grade six through 12, and then a social worker split between GLP and elementary school. Is Holly here? Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item six, appoint part-time RPN that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Marie Kazanowski, who is licensed as a registered professional nurse, be appointed on probation as a part-time nurse for bus runs effective September 28th, 2018 through March 27th, 2018. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level eight, step one.
Second.
No, sorry, level 13. I read that wrong. Oh, yeah. Let me reread that. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent Marie Kazanowski, who is licensed as a registered professional nurse, be appointed on probation as a part-time nurse for bus runs effective September 28th, 2018 through March 27th, 2019. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level 13, step one.
Second. Discussion or questions?
Is Marie here?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Did you just click on it? Just go to your email then. I don't like them. I'm gonna keep reading, Paul. Item seven, appoint extended leave substitute teacher. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Sarah Bitner, who is professionally certified in literacy B through six, early childhood B through two, and childhood education one through six, be appointed as an extended leave substitute elementary teacher to replace Morgan Theophilus effective approximately October 4th, 2018 through approximately December 14th, 2018, or upon the return of Mrs. Theophilus. Salary will be $85 per day.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item eight, appoint school resource officers that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Brian Burgstaller and Sean Bishop be appointed as a school resource officer, as school resource officers effective August 27th, 2018. Salary per agreement with the town of Eden.
Second. Questions or discussion?
I know that we've had a lot of conversation about the SROs being in, in the buildings. They've certainly been here for some of our home games. They've been here for all of the open houses so far, and another one tomorrow night. They've been into classrooms. I know that Officer Burgstaller has been reading to all of the classes at GLP, which has been fun. Perhaps, I don't know, Angelia or Caroline, do you have anything that you want to add about that?
I was just impressed with how pleased students, parents, faculty seem to be to have the SROs in the buildings. And they've approached them and told them how glad they're here. And both the gentlemen, I think, are very excited to be part of our school and really get to know every one of the kids. Mr. Burgstaller said that that's his goal, is to be one-on-one with every single student in this district.
I mean, at first, we didn't really know who they were or what they were doing. So having police officers around the school was a little frightening at first. But after conversation with them, they seemed very polite. And I don't think it's such a bad idea to have them there, just in case something were to happen. I mean, it's gonna freak the little kids out, of course. By little kids, I mean sixth graders. It's always gonna be a little weird having cops around the school, but I mean, in the long run, I think it's beneficial, I think.
I mean, I think it's cool having them there. I've seen them everywhere. They're always in the hallways, talking to kids, talking to the principals. They're at every game I've been to so far, so I think it's really great to have them around.
And I think it's an important thing to have them at football games because there's been a lot of fights at football games lately. There was a couple moms swinging fists.
Just one fight, and it wasn't Eden.
It was a little, I mean, when everybody gets to the back of the bleachers and they all start, "Oh, my gosh, look at the moms." But like, it was nice to have them there for things like that. And just, they seem polite overall, so I think it's a good move.
Excellent. Seeing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item nine, appoint morning program aides that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following be appointed as aides for the continuing education morning program. Brittany Gates and Taylor Mitchell.
Second. Question or discussion?
I just want to bring up the point. I grew up with Brittany, and she's very reliable, very good with children. So that's a good position for her.
I'd say that this is a program that was a request by, by parents who came to the board meeting, and we've been running it ever since. Right about July or August, we start to panic that we don't have enough students. And then by the time school starts, we do. So we're really glad that we have this as an extension of our school day for our kids.
Seeing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C, approve increase in PEL hours that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hours for science teacher Philip Archibald be increased from .67 FTE to .85 FTE effective September 10th, 2018. Mr. Archibald is currently on the preferred eligibility list for science.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This extra course was brought in, in a ninth, not an extra course, but an extra class, ninth period for Mr. Archibald, because another class, seventh period, with another science teacher, was out of compliance in the number of special ed students, and also, I believe it had 31 or 32 students in it.
Seeing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D, oops, item D, approve, approve creation of senior clerk typist position that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the position for, of senior clerk typist be created to fill the upcoming vacancy of the senior clerk stenographer at Eden Elementary School.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
So, Laura Vincenziak, who is retiring, was listed through civil service as a steno, not as a clerk typist, and so, since the steno list that we have to canvass is so small, and frequently doesn't give us more than one candidate on it, we have to, through civil service, create a position before we can theoretically fill it. Okay, so it's not adding a position, it's just simply calling it something different.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item E, approve district goals for 2018-19 that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2018-19 district goals be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
So, upon approval of these district goals by the Board of Education, what the supervisors and building principals will do is to take that out to their faculty and staff within their buildings and create building-level goals or department-level goals that are in alignment with these district goals.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item F, approve bus use that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the use for, the use of buses for day trips for the not-for-profit Eden Senior Group's ACES be approved for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item G, approve accessing of furniture that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following furniture items be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate, items one through three.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item H, approve accessing of buses that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, superintendent, the buses, the following buses be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate, buses one through four.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Are we looking at putting them up, trading them in?
I believe that our bus department got great trade-in values again, and we will be keeping, I believe, one of them, maybe?
These, these were all trade-ins for the vehicles. The fourth one on the list, we traded for a used wheelchair bus because we needed spare wheelchair seats. So, they were all trade-ins.
So, they were all trade-ins. One of the trade-ins required, we needed another wheelchair bus. I believe we needed one that had air conditioning for one of our students, and Mary was able to do some real good swapping with the bus company and get us a spare bus for that run so that we wouldn't have to worry about the health and safety of that student, and so she was able to trade that bus in.
Mary, could you repeat what you said, because I couldn't hear you?
Okay, we had, the first three buses were used as trade-ins for the new buses we just received. The fourth bus on the list, we have a new student who requires a wheelchair and air conditioning. The bus we have, if it breaks down or is out, out of service, we don't have a way to transport that student, so we were able to trade that fourth bus for a used wheelchair bus to see us through if something happens to the one we have.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item I, approve transfers of unassigned fund balance that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorized the transfer of 2017-18 unassigned fund balance into the following reserves as of June 30th, 2018. Items one through eight.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to kind of take hold of this one for a few minutes. You're going to see that we are moving $418,000 from the unemployment reserve into the workers' comp reserve, and this is to align things once a year with our last year's reserve plan that was approved January 17th. And in response to an open comment earlier, what you're not seeing here, which is because I don't have board approval at this point for moving the funds, is in the budgetary process, this Board of Education did appropriate $586,000 of last year's access towards the 18-19 budget. That occurs in the budget process, so that's why that's not here today. And of the reserves that we're putting funds into, 1.5 million of those reserves are into our capital improvement reserves for building and buses, and those can only be pulled out with voter authorization. So, it's not like the Board of Education can utilize those funds for anything else, and the public has to be in agreement of them. We had the tax beneficiary reserve, this is the amount that we were informed by Erie County and by the assessors, that was up for dispute with taxpayers, and so we're setting up a reserve for that in the event that we have to refund those taxes or our tax levy is reduced by that amount. And then the repairs are reserved, we're putting funds in that again, just trying to make sure we can keep the COGEN running. It is in, I believe, year 15 or 16 of an 18-year service life, so there are some concerns there. We started a workers' comp reserve on January 17th of 2018. This board adopted it, and we're funding that. That will help pay for our workers' comp costs. We are not funded through the state insurance fund, as many businesses are, so if somebody goes out on workers' comp, we essentially have to pay the full bill. The same is true with our unemployment, which is why the district has an unemployment reserve that a business would not have. And then we are setting up a $250,000 liability reserve was set up on January 17th, 2018, and we're funding it, and that is for money that would be lost in a legal issue or a liability for which insurance would not cover the district. So, this is just to put a little bit of money aside in the event of a negative event.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item J, approve second read of technology plan that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the second read of the August 2018 through June 2021 technology plan be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
And then, item K, approve external audit report that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the external audit report for year ending June 30th, 2018, prepared by Drescher and Malecki, be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Okay, moving on to information and proposals, the business report.
So, I'd like to start out giving us a status update of where we are for the 2018-19 school year in regards to our federal grants. Our title grants, which are for Every Child Succeeds Act or ESSA, they were reduced $6,071 from the 17-18 overall funding levels. Our special education IDEA grants, they increased $10,588 from the 17-18 levels, and that's due to an increase in our special education population. And then, our universal pre-K, it's remained at its current funding level. As far back as I was able to research was the '08-'09, so kudos to that area for doing more with no more. Then I'd like to talk about the STAR rebate checks. So, the, our New York State Department of Taxation and Finance began sending out rebate checks about three weeks ago. Eligibilities for these checks required a school district to stay within the tax cap, which this district did, and it also was only to residents who received STAR eligibility on their primary residence. So, if you owned just vacant land, you wouldn't receive this check. New York State calculates the amount for the checks, and they do it based on the following criteria. If you have less than $75,000 in income, you would receive 60% of the STAR savings. If you receive, earn between 75 and 150,000, you would receive 42.5% of the STAR. If you earn a household income is 150 to 200,000, you receive 25% of your STAR savings, and if you receive 200, 200 to 275,000, it's 7.5% of the STAR savings. Senior homeowner eligible for enhanced STAR will receive 26% of their STAR savings. The checks are calculated and distributed by the New York State Department of Taxation. The district has no control or no input on these. They are done strictly at the state level through information shared by the Assessor's Office. So, last year, the checks began going out in November, and it was February, March, before people started receiving them, and this year, they started receiving them approximately September 4th. And as of last week, approximately 350,000 checks have been mailed to eligible homeowners. If you have any questions about the rebate checks, the STAR rebate checks program, you should contact the New York State Office of Department of Taxation and Finance for more information. Transportation updates. I want to start out with saying kudos to our transportation department. We are very fortunate to have Mary Banco and Sheri Stevens working in the transportation department. They rerouted the whole district that, because of the move of the sixth graders to the middle school, they got the beginning of the year off with no major snafus. They used the new software, which was, what I'm being told, was a huge time savings for them. So, thank you to the board for allowing them to have that, and we move forward into the 18-19 school year. We already have bus drill number one done, and we have two more to do before the end of, I think it's April.
Thank you.
Sandy, are you ready?
So, under the superintendent's report, what I wanted to say about the start of the school year is that, is that it really went smooth, and I am really grateful to all the staff and the administrators, regardless of what role they played, for helping in that. There were so many new pieces. The Raptor system, which is new, which is in all three buildings in the district office with scans and badges. Our visitors, I know Mr. Loretto got badged one day, Mr. Loretto, can you hear me? You got badged one day, right? Yes, he did. And then after 24 hours, it voids out, which is pretty nice, so you can't reuse it. So, that was something new. It's just an extra piece that our secretaries in the main office, or in our case, our new attendance clerk at the middle and high school, have to contend with upon all the other new stuff. A new drop-off loop and pick-up loop at the middle school and high school, separating our, our cars from our buses, and for the most part, keeping most of the parents in the front of the school and not in the athletic lot. Super grateful to our SROs and our Eden Police Department for being there on the first couple of days of school to help us do this. There are in excess of 60 drop-offs at GLP, and some days 80, and they've been able to keep all these cars off the road so that they're not blocking traffic, which is quite the feat.
Sandy, I'd like to also thank the quick action of, when you exited the high school lot, drop-off point, it's a one-way, so parents were trying to make a left turn and, from the right lane, and within two days, the arrows were painted on, and the traffic is moving much quicker on the exit, so kudos to
So, so what-
-who saw that issue and got it corrected right away.
So, we saw that in the first day of school, and I, I don't remember, I think it actually was one of the SROs who said, "Hey, it's a two-lane, but there's only one arrow, but when you get up towards School View, it doesn't have a right and a left arrow." So, good, I'm glad that that really helped out a lot. And then we are still waiting for our attendance office at the front of the middle school and high school to be finished, but in the meantime, we do have a greeter who sits there and, and opens the door for someone who's coming to that front entrance. All of our parents have been incredibly cooperative. All three buildings now are shut down. You, you honestly cannot get in without having ID, without getting locked into some, some form of that entrance, and I know that it's made a lot of people feel a lot safer. And so, but a lot of new things for our secretaries to contend with, a lot of new things for our students. I'm glad that, that one in our audience brought up a concern that we'll certainly take a look at at the timing, because there are more students in the middle school and the high school. But every, I, I hope that everybody's been really patient, and I believe that they have in adjusting to all the newness, because for so long, there was nothing new. I mean, there really was nothing new that happened. In addition to that, under the wall of distinction, someone has it. There's a plaque that has Kim Curtis on it. Laura can be our Vanna White here. So, I know the board saw it, but it's certainly able to go down into the audience. There will be two of these, one for Barbara Yale, class of 90, and then one for Kim Curtis, maiden name is Wenglet, class of 79, for our new award, which is the wall of distinction. This is something that's being offered to, to recep, two recipients this year, because the committee that got together, there were eight of us, just could not decide between these two, two honorees. Barbara Yale lives in Pakistan, doing work right now with undeveloped countries to keep them sustainable, and Kim Curtis will actually be here for an assembly with our students on October 3rd, and she is offered also to do an evening program on October 4th. So, my job is to get a flyer out this week and to start to advertise both of those. And Angelia had the opportunity to, to sit in and, and help me understand what the kids might want to hear, what they might want, might want to hear differently, so we're pretty excited about. And her title is From Eden Central School District to the Jumbotron in New York City, and she will be here with a film crew, and she will also be talking with Channel 7 while she's here in Western New York. So, that's Kim, and Barbara Yales is on its way. Then, also, our very first day of school, Campus, which is our construction management firm, did provide the refreshments, and I just wanted to say publicly a thank you, because it makes it really nice to have food on the first day and coffee.
Okay, before we move on to the board report, I know our student reps just wanted to do a little Homecoming Week informational.
Okay, can you hear me over there? Yes, okay. So, Homecoming Week is really exciting for all the students, look forward to it every single year, and me and Angelia, she's my vice president, by the way, you don't know her by now, you probably do, but we just wanted to go over the itinerary for Homecoming Week and what it entails a little bit, just so keep you guys kind of informed. So, every day, there is a different theme that we dress up as. Monday will be Mix Match Monday. Tuesday will be Tropical Tuesday. Wednesday will be Class Color Wednesday. So, every grade gets to pick a color, and they get to dress up as that color. So, the seniors get red, white, and blue, that's what they chose, which is really cool. The juniors have yellow, the sophomores have blue, the freshmen have pink, the eighth graders have green, the seventh graders have purple, and the sixth graders have orange. So, it's just a chance to entire class come together and just dress up together. On Wednesday night, we have the bonfire, as every year, every student's excited to go, ninth graders are always excited. It will go from 7:00 PM till 9:00 PM.
But it's in a different spot.
What'd you say?
It's in a different spot.
Yes, it is. It's by, like, where all the construction crews are, that, like, fenced-in area in the turf, it's like in between on the grass.
Between GLP and the bus garage. Between GLP and the bus garage, right? Don't let me tell you wrong. It's not near the high school, right? Where is it?
No, it's still at the high school. It's just, it's right next to the turf, because obviously the turf's there now.
Oh, so it's next to the staging area. Okay.
Yeah.
You guys did good then, because that's not where it was going to be. So good for you.
Yeah. Well, they like wanted to throw us in the fenced area, and we were like, no, thank you. But there'll be serving hot dogs, like we do every year. We have requested the use for grills. The fire department will be there. Two students, Clayton Blaze and Alan Henry, have offered to build the fire during school. Very nice of them, very good kids. I have the materials to do it, like the wood and everything. So the fire will be put out at 9:00 PM sharp, and everyone will be dismissed. On Thursday, we have tractor day dress-up. So flannels, boots, everything. There will be a cornhole tournament after school, which is new this year. Everyone's super excited about that. It's going to be right before you walk in the athletic doors on that lawn right there. So people seem super excited about it. There'll be pizza there. We're working with Eats Pizza at the moment. They said they were interested in donating some pizza, which is awesome. On Friday is a... Hello? Okay. Friday is a half-day, and it's Raider Pride Day. So everyone dresses in maroon, gray, and white. And it will be the evacuation drill in the morning. So we all evacuate the building. And then the pep rally will begin around 9:00 AM and go till dismissal. The pep rally this year, we are trying to put new events in, trying to change it up a little bit. And we extended the pep rally by 15 extra minutes because it always gets crammed, not enough time, kids miss buses, it's just not a good situation. So we were very, very reluctant at first to involve the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in it, because it's kind of a rite of passage when you hit ninth grade. But teachers brought up suggestions. They're like, okay, we need to make them feel welcome. So we compromised, and the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will be doing a game of tug-of-war to kind of get them excited for when they get older. So it's a good compromise. That night will be the homecoming football game, starting at 7:00 PM. Mr. Dan Carrier's Cold Stone Food Truck will be arriving at 6:00 PM. And the Eden PTA Snacks Shack will be open. So it's kind of an event thing. I know the senior class president, Emily Nelson, is going to be running face paint along with the senior class, which is super exciting. So it's just like a chance, everyone come together and cheer on the football team. Let's see. Okay, so then we're up to Saturday, which is the homecoming dance. The dance will start at 7:00 PM and go to 10:00 PM. Students will not be let in until 7:00 PM, and they will not be let in after 8:00 PM. So you have to arrive at a specific time. There'll be no re-entry to the building, no backpacks. Hallways will be blocked off. Tickets will be sold Tuesday through Thursday during lunches by student council, and the tickets will be $7 apiece. We, Angelia actually booked the DJ, and...
Did you book the photo booth?
We booked a photo booth, which is new and exciting. A lot of people said that they were super excited about that. Sophomore class said they were interested in running the snack table in the cafeteria. There's always pizza and water and stuff, so they said they thought, well, it would be a good fundraiser. Also, Mr. Kodehie told me about face paint stickers that we could also sell to boost school profits and just get a good message across. Do you want to talk about that, or just did I cover it?
So what they're referring to is the Booster Club owns a whole pile of temporary tattoos. They actually came out pretty cool. We have three different versions of them. And just before the meeting started, I offered the opportunity to kind of split the revenues with a group and to have all the kids be able to put on the temporary tattoos, purchase them through the student council, and so they can make a little bit of money. And the tattoos last, I'm told, four days or even longer. And so they can wear them all through homecoming week, which is kind of a neat thing, not only to raise some funds, but also if we can get every kid wearing a temporary tattoo in Eden, that would be pretty cool.
Yeah, so what I forgot to mention is Friday is Drive Your Tractor to School Day. Just slipped my mind. Okay. Anyways, so we will be, me and Angelia and Cameron Claywon, our treasurer, and Anna Bremiller, our secretary, we will be arriving early to the homecoming dance, set up, make sure everything's running smoothly. And yeah.
And so I anticipate if it's a good weather day, that some students from the elementary school and GLP will walk up to see the tractors. And if anyone's brave enough to get an SRO into the Harvester, that would be worth a Facebook pic for me. Okay?
Yeah, it's a very exciting time, but we are on a major time constraint. We had...
Major.
Major. Three weeks, not even two weeks, to book a DJ, and it's very hard. But Mr. Shibish has been really considerate. He's different because he doesn't know whatever Mr. Servoni knew before. So we've had to run everything by him, and he's just been really good with that. So we're very thankful for him. And our new student advisor, who is Ms. Yuhas, she's a home monitor. We love her. She's very organized, and we are very excited to be working with her. But yeah, we love it because we get to involve the students, especially with the cornhole game and the pep rally. We're just very excited, so thank you.
One more late addition. So we also decorate the hallways. That will be taking place this Friday. Every class gets to decorate their hallways their color. So for example, we are red, white, and blue. Our hallway's going to be all-American when you walk in Monday morning. And everyone gets super, super excited about it. They're like, oh, my gosh, look at, we've got flags on our locker with our name on it. Look at the strings of lights. And then that Friday, that half-day, everything comes down. It's like a 20-minute tag team. Okay, who's the tallest? Who can reach and grab this down? So that was approved by Mr. Shibish. He, again, has been good to us. He doesn't know what it's like to run the pep rally or anything. And we told him, we need an advisor. Like, we cannot do this ourselves. And next day, oh, yeah, it's taken care of. So he was good to us. We have to run a lot of things by him, which isn't like a bad thing. But Ms. Yuhas has done a wonderful job as well.
We're super excited for you, Student Council, for Ms. Yuhas. She was here at the last board meeting. She's just plain excited to be here. So I know that it'll be an awful lot of fun for her. And then I'm glad that you brought that up, because under the consent agenda, it's worth noting that Mrs. Pace is doing AFS advisor again for the first year after many, many years. I believe we have six AFS students. Am I right, Angelia? Okay. Then also, we have the middle school AEP, which is our academic advisor, so that we are splitting our middle school students from our high school. And then again, after a really long absence, mock trial is coming back, and Mr. Huber will be the mock trial advisor. Thank you. Right, item C, the board report.
I just wanted to bring up an incident that happened last Friday. For those of you who perhaps are not aware, a football player was injured on the football field, and this, all of a sudden, I'm told, became a big deal on social media regarding response time and all sorts of, much of which was nonsense. First of all, the player is fine. And so obviously, most importantly, he's fine. He's... It's reported to me that he'll likely play this Friday. Most of what occurred, ambulance coming, was precautionary in the emergency call. They were told it was precautionary. I don't know if that affected response time. Truthfully, you know, we have a volunteer emergency service that was called in, and by lots of reports, they do a great job. And so that really isn't why I'm saying a few things. What's most critical is that the response time was actually about 30 seconds. And I just wanted to go over, we have a full-time trainer on staff, and she's a college graduate. She has a defibrillator, she has a huge medical bag. Yes, she tapes ankles, she tapes, she looks at, she gives kids ice bags because they got a sore wrist. But it's times like these when we're very, very pleased that we have a full-time trainer. Our athletic department feels that it's critical to have a full-time trainer. The board has, for the last, I think it's now eight years, has had a full-time trainer as part of our budget. Some of the trainer's duties include both home and away games for football, both home and away games for the modified teams. Maybe many of you know I take pictures for the Booster Club. You know, she's at every game I've ever been at, and I've been at lots and lots of games. She's at wrestling matches, basketball, volleyball. She's basically always here. And it's critically important that we understand, you know, the ambulance did this or that or whatever. We're not opposed to having an ambulance, the EES, on-site. It's in discussions, it may happen. But it's critical to understand that the response time was less than 30 seconds for the injured player. And when there's more than one game, there's a softball game, there's a baseball game, there's a lacrosse game, she rides a golf cart between all of those games, and she's at every game, and they can contact her if there's an injury in a different field, and she zips right over. So I really just wanted to make that clear. A, the player is fine, and you know, thanks for all the concern, and he's doing great. And B, you know, medical help was at his side in less than 30 seconds.
So Jack, if I could just add into that, too, is that our athletic trainer goes to away football games with us as well. We were at a football game last year that did not have an athletic trainer, and there was an injury. So we were really glad that we do that with ours. Anyone else?
The board is also taking a look at the election process and where it's held. We're in some discussion with Erie County Elections to see if we can move the elections out of the school to help with security. That's one of our concerns with some of the changes in the law now that the governor has put in place. We can have people in the buildings after 7 o'clock, and we still have students in the buildings, maybe selling dinners with some of their work. So we are exploring the options of moving the elections to help secure our buildings.
So this was a conversation at the safety meeting the other day. Ellen, feel free to jump in anywhere on this one, is that years ago, there were four sites. St. John's was one, and the Highway Department was one as well.
Four different... Oh, right, right. And East Eden Fire Hall, St. John's, right, and the Highway Department. And we had talked about the possibility of moving back to the Highway Department, perhaps?
Yeah, I know some other organizations have offered the buildings to us, too, if we need be. The Town Hall, possibly the Eden Fire Department have offered to host them, so they're not in the school, to help secure the schools.
But we would just have to work that out with Erie County Voting, or the Board of Elections. Right.
Yeah, for this November, it does not look like we're going to be able to do it, because the cards have already went out where people are supposed to vote. But hopefully, by the next elections, we will have some resolution on that to help secure the buildings.
But I think the issue is still school, our budget elections, that we would, they've always been in the school, and that's another issue.
We could discuss all those after we move maybe the general election and see how it goes.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay. Item seven, future dates. A, board docs training for the Board of Education, Wednesday, October 17th, 2018, 5:45 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. Item B, regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, October 17th, 2018, 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. Item eight, anticipated executive session that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education, enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person's and CSEA negotiations.
Second. Questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carried. Thank you.